Good afternoon.
Good afternoon again with the mic on this time. She did, shake one. Good to see everyone. Mr. Brown has the medium and proper appetizer.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you so much. Ms. Mosley, you've been so kind to lead us into our prayer and our pledge. Please stand for the prayer and pledge of allegiance.
Let us pray. Gracious and kind, benevolent Father, we thank you for this day and all the blessings that you bestowed upon us. We thank you for giving this body, Father God, the wisdom and divine guidance, the need to take care of the business community. And Father God, as we close this prayer, we want to pause and pray for our county manager who's given so much of his time and efforts to make Liberty County a better place. We pray that you bless his marriage and his family, bless his ministry, and Father God, just give him the guidance he needs as he moves forward. This we thank you for, in Christ's name, and everybody say amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, kind sir. I will. I was trying to give somebody the time to get, he's coming in. Very quickly, we kind of had a long day, ladies and gentlemen. We've been doing some planning for the Betterment of Liberty County. So I want to try to not run over anything, but be expeditious and efficient as we conduct this meeting and these agenda items. But let me go right ahead on and we'll come back to something we want to do. I was trying to see Dr. Karen. Let's see, I see her, she's hiding back there, all right. Proclamations, Dr. Bill American Red Cross Month and we know it's Earth Day coming up, so you will come, you and your respective, yes, let's do both, please.
Good evening, everyone.
Hello.
Okay, sorry. This is Red Cross Month, March is Red Cross Month, and I'd like to introduce the staff from the American Red Cross, sir. Would you like to say your name and?
Hi, thank you for having me. My name is Steve Dancel. I'm actually the volunteer recruitment specialist for all of the southern part of Georgia for the American Red Cross.
Good to have you, sir.
So the American Red Cross helps out not with blood drives. That's what most people recognize or think, oh, they just do the blood drive. But they do so much more. They help in the time of disasters and crises. They also set up shelters when they're needed. They're there for anything when a family is in need during a fire. They actually have educational programs where they do babysitting training. They do CPR and lifeguards. These are skills that, once you learn them, that you can use them throughout your life. We're ready, Mr. Brown.
This is American Red Cross Month 2025. Whereas March is American Red Cross Month, a special time to honor the kindness of our neighbors who aid families in need every day in Georgia, across the United States and around the world. Their dedication touches millions of lives each year as they carry out organizations' mission of preventing and alleviating suffering. And whereas caring for one another is at the heart of our great state and exemplified by our neighbors, whose simple act of kindness through the Red Cross provide help and hope in people's most difficult moments. Continuing the lifesaving legacy of Clara Barton, who founded the organization more than 140 years ago. And whereas every day, these ordinary individuals lend a helping hand to make an extraordinary difference for Georgia residents in need. Local families have relied on Red Cross volunteers for comfort and hope while coping with various emergencies. And whereas additionally, staff and volunteers from the Southeast Georgia chapter deployed to national disasters like hurricanes, wildfires, and tornadoes and help people by addressing their urgent needs, including food, lodging, and recovery support. And whereas the support, volunteerism, and generous donations from these inspiring individuals are critical to our community's resilience, we hereby recognize this month of March in honor of all those who fulfill Clara Barton's noble words, "You must never think of anything except the need and how to meet it," and ask everyone to join in this commitment. Now therefore, I, Donald L. Lovett, Chairman of the Liberty County Board of Commissioners, by virtue of the authority vested in me by the laws of Liberty County and Georgia, to hereby proclaim March 2025 as Red Cross Month. I encourage all Americans to reach out and support its humanitarian mission. In witness whereof, I had unto set my hand this twentieth day of March in the year of our Lord, 2023, and Liberty County State of Georgia.
And I'm sorry, sir, if I, quickly, we have some of our youth volunteer and two other volunteers that have been volunteer for over, Ms. Millie, how many years?
Over thirty years.
I've been a volunteer for the American Red Cross since 1985.
Just come to the drive for the free food.
All right, thank you. Can we have Relay for Life, I mean, I'm sorry, Keep Live Beautiful come up, please.
If y'all just change places just for a minute, then you'll make your way to the podium for pictures, okay?
Good evening again. So we have Keep Live Beautiful, the award-winning program with volunteers. Volunteers is the heart of our program. We cannot do what we do without our volunteers, and I just would like to make sure I make that clear. Earth Day is coming up on April the 12th, ninth of 2025, which is on a Saturday. And we're trying to make sure everybody realize that. It's not on a Friday, it's on a Saturday. We listen to our feedback and we're hoping that it'll be better for our community. It would be from 10:00 to 2:00 at Bryan Commons, and I would like to introduce our executive board member.
Hi, I'm Julie Simmons. I'm an executive board member of KLB, and plus I work for City of Heinzville Public Works, and it's a pleasure for y'all to stand behind us.
And the rest of the group behind us are volunteers and on the board. So they take a lot of time dedicated to the commitment and the mission of Keep Live Beautiful, and I just want to make sure that they are recognized also.
We want to recognize them. Brown?
This is a proclamation designating April 12th, 2025, as Earth Day in Liberty County. Whereas the first Earth Day was created 55 years ago, recognizing the importance of every person in preserving our natural resources. And on that first Earth Day, 20 million Americans rallied for a healthy, sustainable environment. And whereas the global community now faces extraordinary challenges such as global health issues, food and water shortages, extreme weather events, and economic struggles. And whereas all life forms on earth have a right to a healthy, sustainable environment, and as caretakers of the planet, we all have an obligation to change the human behaviors that contribute to climate change and environmental degradation to preserve the earth's beauty and its resources. And whereas this obligation extends not only to today's caretakers, but also to the future generations of caretakers who will inherit the planet from us. And whereas Liberty County is blessed with a wealth of green space, which enriches the lives of both residents and visitors alike, providing habitat for varied flora and fauna, sustained resources, and many diverse recreational opportunities. And whereas Liberty County supports projects that demonstrate and encourage energy conservation, sustainability, and the usage of renewable energy. And whereas many local community members, schools, businesses, and environmental organizations are working together in the interest of the planet to inspire intergenerational participation through local actions and global environmental consciousness. Now therefore, be it resolved, I, Donald L. Lovett, and members of Liberty County Commission, to hereby proclaim April 12th, 2025, as Earth Day in Liberty County. And I encourage all citizens to become engaged in local and global efforts to help improve the environment, so declared on this twentieth day of March, 2025.
And we'd like to know that every and each commissioner is invited. This is your personal invitation to come out on April the 12th, and we hope to see the community out there.
Thank you. If we'll do the Red Cross Group first for the photo and then we follow it, but our Earth Day, Keep Live Beautiful Committee. Commissions, if you would gather around for the.
No, no, fifth, fifth.
Red Cross?
Heinzville is the fifth of April, the same day as the countings. He was on TV today. He did an interview with WTOC and did an outstanding job.
What celebration were you? I didn't want to mess up like I did last time.
Keep Live Beautiful?
All right, Earth Day on three. One, two, three.
Birthday.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Commissioner Gillis, since we're talking about events, go ahead and get yours in now, so I think it's a good place to introduce your event you want to announce.
Okay. Yeah, thanks, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, I had Maria print this flyer out. They have a golf tournament in honor of Ray Dent. Ray and I worked together for over 20 years out at Public Works. And this is a memorial golf tournament in his honor. And I told his wife that I would mention it to you all so that we could support it. I don't play golf, but I am going to sponsor a whole, and I know Commissioner Fraser is, is the next Tag of Wood. I know he'll probably get a team, but I would like for us to support this event if we can.
Thank you, sir, the flyer. Each one of the places, Mr. Dent was a good friend, and we cherish his memory and we miss him. During the prayer a little while ago, Mr. Mosley prayed for the health and welfare of our county manager who, at this point, is officially serving in his last meeting list. There's a call meeting, we had the call one, y'all. As county manager, we want to appreciate him for his service to Liberty County. Forty-three years, if I have it right, forty-three years of service. This is the longevity.
I just want to publicly say that Horace Fleming and Sherman drove all the way to Marion, Indiana, to see this.
We certainly do appreciate your service, Mr. Brown, words cannot express. In March 27th, there will be a grand ceremony in his honor, from one to four, at the Liberty County Community Complex. And please stop by to express your greeting. But this time, we got a lot of commissioners to do a little snippet of what's to come on the 27th. So we'll just start with Commissioner Walden, work our way down this way.
What you want me to say? Can't say much. Joey's been a big help to me. I mean, he's taught me a lot about the government, and we worked together, went to school together, so. You know, there's some things we just really don't, it's just something we don't want to talk about that we did together. But I wish him all the luck. He knows he's not going far. He's, you know, telephoned, you don't have to call long distance no more. So if you need me to do anything, appreciate all y'all. Looking forward to your retirement and mine, too.
Commissioner Gillis?
Yeah, I've been knowing Joy a long time, and I know that the event that we're having on the 27th is retirement celebration for Joy. It's not a roast, but I'm going to turn it into a roast. But I mean, Joy's been a good friend. a good friend way before I became a commissioner. I think I might even have coached Joey, him being a little younger than me. But a great friend, you know, someone that I could depend on, on and off the commission. You know, here to see you go, Joe, I had kind of hoped that, you know, just being my last turn, that we would, you know, walk out of here at the same time. But, you know, you beat me by three and a half years. But we'll, we'll, I'll see you around. And, you know, I've enjoyed the things that you've taught me, you know, since I've been here. And, you know, I mean, county government, the old commercial, Bo, Bo Jackson, Bo knows, Joey knows county government. Taxes is a guarantee, death is a guarantee, trouble is a guarantee. But Joey Brown knowing county government, that's a guarantee. You can put your money on that. So Joey, enjoy your retirement.
I remember when Joey first come on board back under the ML Cofer days. ML kind of took him under his wing right there and showed him a few things, helping him out. But I'll make it quick. Joey, you're a wealth of knowledge. We gonna miss you a lot. And I know we've interacted over the years, the wealth of knowledge that I've picked up from you also. I appreciate serving with you.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Gillis?
Yes, sir. Well, Mr. Brown, it's been a pleasure serving with you for over the last twenty-three years or so. But I know you've been here twenty, before I got in. But I do appreciate everything that you've done for me as a commissioner and for the county. Because this is one man we can truly say that watches the money. And I appreciate that as a taxpayer. And we're going to miss you, but I wish you all the luck in the world with your family and your grandchildren. And it's been a blessing to serve with you. That's all I'm going to say right now.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Yeah, I save that for next Friday. But, Mr. Brown, it's been thirteen years since I've been up here. And I just want to say, from the bottom of my heart, I really appreciate you. You know, it was, it was definitely a learning curve for me, being so young at that time. But having a county administrator with your type of expertise and knowledge really helped the transition really easy. Man, I don't see you at ACCG conferences and none of that anymore. He's just going to be... But again, you know, enjoy your family, enjoy your grants, and we'll be here. And you definitely have left Liberty County in a better place. And we definitely appreciate it. You know, some people might think we overspend. But let me tell you, I don't know anyone in this world who is more frugal. I just say that, than him.
That's right.
He, he, he watches the county money as close as he watches his. So, you know, just enjoy it. And, you know, just remember, I do like deer meat. There we go. Thank you.
Mr. Brown, my friend, I met Mr. Brown back in nineteen ninety-four, when we started up the Liberty County nine-one-one service. He got us through that. Nine-one-one is a big success and something that's needed in the county, all counties now. And I became a commissioner in ninety-nine. Did we always agree upon everything?
Sure.
No. But at the end of the day, we were here for the citizens of Liberty County. That's what it's all about. And if you take everyone in our family, always agreeing, agreeing, you'll never come up with better ideas. Mr. Brown will take a knife and scrape the brown off of a penny. That's just how tidy he is. But you know what? It's all for the good. And just remember, now you can go around and pick up those roadkill dears and mount them on the wall.
Words cannot express the gratitude that this commission, this community owes you, my friend. And like the other, we'll say the voluminous words for the farewell. But thank you for being there. You know, I started off as district commissioner, and then I became the chairman. And you helped walk me through that. And you're still walking me through that. So I appreciate that to the utmost. And I can say that Liberty County has been blessed to have had you in leadership for these number of years. I know you hadn't always been the county administrator, but for all the years you've given service, it's meant a lot. And we can see the fruit of your labor all around us. And we'll talk about that more on the twenty-seventh. But just thank you so much for your perseverance. And now's your time to enjoy yourself and your family and your grants, all those things that you want to do. And we, you know, we're working on a way to keep you around a little while, you know. So thank you so much for your, your service and, and for your legacy with the county. The Brown name has been in this community for a long, long time. It's in his DNA to serve. So we appreciate the shoulders that you stand on. And we appreciate that legacy you've left for others to stand on. And we know that you have been strategic in the gentleman that's sitting next to you. And we look forward to his serving. And we know that you'll be a resource to, to him and to this community in days ahead. So thank you and God bless. One more time, hand for just...
Excuse me, Mr. Chair. Can we take a picture with him? Because what I'm saying is, y'all know Joey do not like taking pictures. So this is really our opportunity to, to, I mean, technically, make him take a picture with it.
Come on.
There you go. Come on.
Come on. You're right, he's always behind the camera.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah. There you go, real me can cry.
And we got him in the middle.
Joey Brown on three. One, two, three.
Joey Brown!
We're not going to see Joseph and Joseph down there.
Yeah, break up the team. All right, now that the formalities are out of the way. LCPC, you ready to report? How you going to follow that act? I'm not sure. While she's coming, Commissioner Walden, does Mr. Rickerson, is he in your district? Jeff?
Yeah, I just saw that today.
Would you might like to make a comment on?
I had just read that his father had passed. I didn't know anything about, you know, that him being sick. I knew he was from Mover and Hazelhurst. But I did read it in the paper today. And I saw one of the staff somewhere uptown. And I started to try to get it pulled over. But of course, in Heinzville, you get run over if you don't really get in the driveway. But I don't, that's all I know, that it just, I guess it must have, he'd been sick for a while. I don't know that. So...
He had entered into hospice care, so it wasn't totally unexpected. Yeah.
And, and also, you know, along with that, one of our commissioners that served with Mr. Fussell, Kenny Fussell, his mother passed. So just keep all of those in your prayers.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Marty?
Okay. So I'm here to present the cottages on Carter Phase One B final plat. This is the developer of Walterville Properties, which is a Dryden company. It's designed by Hemi-Sack Engineering. It is thirty lots for single-family homes, Zoned R-12, located on Bill Carter Road in District One. This is the total holdings of the Walterville Properties, Ogglethorpe and Bill Carter Road. And it's at the intersection of Lewis Frazier as well. The Phase One preliminary plat included this portion of the, of the entire parcel. And then Phase One was, One A was platted here in the blue. And now we are looking at these two areas for Phase One B. There are two pages to this plaque, because there's thirty lots. So here's Bill Carter Road. They constructed this stubout up to here, and then all the way around to here. These four lots here were, or five lots, rather, were originally going to be part of Phase One A, but they had to do some more studying to satisfy the Department of Health. And so they're now, they've done that, and they're now included in Phase One B plat. So all these lots in red are the thirty lots. And then there is one lot here, detention lot, that's being dedicated to the HOA. So the Department of Health usually puts a, has to stamp these plaits. And they're typical, what they certify is that, you know, these lots are good for three to four bedrooms in a single-family home. Well, they weren't quite willing to say that about these lots that are here in purple. So the note that's there has been added to the plat. An available, allowable number of bedrooms, as well as type and size of septic systems, will be determined by the Liberty County Board of Health, based upon soil conditions on the individual lots at the time of permitting. For lots one oh six through one seventeen, as I mentioned, those are the lots that are down there in purple. So they may have to go through a little extra effort to get those, those septic systems permitted, or they may not be able to get a two or, a three or four-bedroom home on those lots. And this is the second page, the signature page that you're all familiar with. The lot requirements, this is standard R-12 zoning in the UDO, which has a minimum lot size of twelve thousand square feet and a minimum lot width of eighty feet. And, but because of septic systems, the Department of Health has their own standards, which is a half-acre minimum lot size and a hundred-foot minimum lot width. And the setbacks in the UDO for R-12 zoning is a twenty-five-foot front setback, twenty to the rear, if you have an internal side, you know, an internal lot where you got lots on either side of you, a fifteen-foot side setback. And if you have a corner lot, the lot, the side that's on the other side street is a twenty-five-foot setback. As a condition of rezoning approval, there was that forty-foot setback from Bill Carter Road imposed on this, this rezoning. But none of the lots are affected by that. None of them, but Bill Carter Road. So dedications to the county include just under a half mile of new streets, the water and stormwater improvements and the associated easements for the functional maintenance of those stormwater improvements. And then that three-acre pond is being dedicated to the HOA that I mentioned. The utilities have been installed, and we do have guarantees for the remainder, remaining improvements. So the primary improvements, we have a letter of credit in the amount of two-hundred-nineteen thousand and sixty-six dollars, and that covers the paving and striping and signage. And then we have another letter of credit for two-hundred-and-thirty-four thousand, one-hundred-and-fourteen dollars, and that covers the sidewalks and trees, street trees. And for the maintenance, we have another letter of credit that's for the next two years for a hundred-and-thirty thousand, eight-hundred-and-eighty-six dollars and ten cents. Staff recommendation is for cottages on Carter Phase One B final plat, approval with standard conditions.
Okay, before, again, question I'm yielding you. Go back to the very first, help me understand the, the Department of Health statement. Yes, that was made, in fact, it's ironic, we talked about that today, and I'm planning. But help me understand that statement.
Yes. So what they have to, what they certify on all final plaits that have septic systems or aren't, or public water, but this, this applies you to septic.
Right.
Is it says that, a review of the plat as presented by the said engineer surveyor finds that the plat complies with the onsite sewage management system regulations for a typical residence of three or four bedrooms with basic appurtenances. Each lot must be reviewed and approved for onsite sewage management system placement prior to the issuance of a construction permit. So what they're willing, what they're saying here is for lots one oh six through one seventeen, they're, they're not guaranteeing that you're going to get a three or four-bedroom home on that lot.
So what would be the alternative?
Well, it also, what they're also saying is that you may not have a typical, you know, you may have to have a mound system instead of it, you know, an in-ground system as well.
Earlier, the higher, okay, okay, okay. As versus the traditional, what, what word?
Right. It's my understanding that kind of when they went in there, because I think, you know, Dryden is used to just clear, you know, not having septic system on their lots. And so they usually just go in there and they do the grading, they disturb the natural soils, they bring in fill, whatever. Well, that doesn't, that can impact the Department of Health's evaluation of the soil conditions and their suitability for onsite septic systems. So I think there had been some disturbance of the natural soils in this, on those lots. And so there was a concern. But they won't build houses there unless they get that Department of Health approval for the septic.
So they'll go back, the health...
They'll have to probably jump through a few more hoops, you know, and do a more, a better look at what's out there and what they're proposing.
And they'll go in and reassess and determine, okay, all right, I got it now. I got it now.
My, I heard you mention something about one pond, a three-acre pond.
Well, it's not a pond on the entirety of it. The pond is over here, and it kind of channels a little bit. And there's a little bit more over here. And then it drains off into another pond that's back here. The pond that's back here hasn't been platted yet because they haven't brought that land into any of the final plaits so far. So you're not responsible, the county is not responsible for the functional maintenance of that yet.
Okay. But I want to make sure it's right. Now, there's a pond up front near Bill Carter Road.
I believe on, I mean, one, I think it's on this side, correct?
Mm-hmm.
On that, left side of the entrance as you come into the subdivision, yes.
So what is his intention doing with that one?
That one is constructed and is already final-platted with Phase One A.
I mean, is he, is he going to clean that up, or?
Oh, as far as aesthetics and how it looks?
Yeah, it's, it's action.
I would think he'd want to. It's like the gateway into his subdivision. But I'm not sure what his intentions are for cleaning that up. I don't know if Trent has any idea either.
Well, technically, the HOA has responsibilities for aesthetics and mowing. And then, once the maintenance period is done, there's functional maintenance to go through. It's all that Liberty County gets out of that, just making sure that water can get from point A to point B. But right now, he's considered the HOA because he owns all the lots. So it would be his responsibility.
Right.
Okay. So who reminds him of? Hold on, Commissioner Walden. So it's, so is it, who reminds him of that responsibility? How's, or is just, it's considered automatic that he would do it? Or how's that? Who's the gatekeeper?
So there's really not a gatekeeper. You know, what happens is when we're looking at it, as far as county responsibility, we look for functionality of water from point A to point B. When that is interfered with, then we have to get involved. But as far as aesthetics and the mowing, that's his responsibility. As our urbanized area grows, we'll eventually end up getting into stormwater maintenance agreements. And he's got to be able to clean and do that. So that gatekeeper will become the health department, but we're not there.
Okay. So at this point, would, could we ask?
We could certainly ask him.
Yes. Okay. All right, let's do that.
No worries. I mean, we can always ask him, say, hey, clean this up.
Commissions have made notice that is?
It's an eyesore. I hate to see someone go out there and think about buying a house. I don't know what it's going to cost. But the way how it's situated right in their back door, got this eyesore.
I mean, it would be in his best interest to make his entrance look nice. And, you know, this is only speculation, but it could be because there's still construction going on.
That's in the subdivision, ain't it?
That he may be waiting until all the construction.
On the entrance. Show them again, Marty, where the...
The entrance off of Bill Carter.
Bill Carter Road, this is Bill Carter Road right here.
Okay. So the pond that he's talking about is where?
I'm sorry.
It's right up, right next to Bill Carter Road.
It is, yeah.
Is that the one, is that the one that has been there?
Yes.
That was there when the...
Years ago, yes. Years ago, we used to fish out there.
Yeah, I think I pointed to that. I was thinking this was Bill Carter Road. But you're right, this is Bill Carter Road, and it's probably this pond wetland area right here.
I thought he dug it, so that has been there.
No.
I, I, I know it's been there for some time.
I couldn't see it before.
There used to be what you call a free-flowing well out there, right, Mr. Fleming? Yeah.
What, Mr. Stevens, it just, it just looks bad. It's got trashed. I mean...
What, Mr. Stevens, it just, it just looks bad, it's got trashed or, I mean, did he need, is it dirt, has it got sawed down?
No sawed or nothing to it, he's got it all fenced, what you call it, vapor, the solid erosion barrier.
Silk fence.
Around it, it just looks, and I could say.
They probably hadn't even, vanished, yeah.
It's not done yet.
Of course you're here. You're right, Marty, I mean, you selling houses in there, you would like the entrance to look conducive, I can imagine that, he's going to sell the last house and just walk off and leave it.
Yeah.
Right, I mean, I'm sure he's going to put up a sign for the subdivision there too, as well, you know.
That's almost, Marty, that's almost completed. Sign for the subdivision?
The sign is?
It's almost completed.
Well, maybe that's the first step in undressing up that entrance.
Well, now that we've made mention of it, yes.
Yes, yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll talk to him.
Now, one more thing, one more question I got, and I'll be, in reference to that, where is the cemetery at from right there? I'm trying to keep it in mind.
So I've received, and as is Trent's office, received the plans for cottages on Carter, Phase 2, which is what's in the future phase over here. And this is the cemetery lot and it does show that as a preserved lot on that, yeah.
Okay, all right, okay.
It is, it is this period right here, it is, it is blocked off and I just couldn't read it from that far.
Right.
We can't either.
There, it's on the other side of the road from that, that's just not included on here.
It's not on this page, but it is definitely blocked out.
Yes, definitely.
Okay, all right, let's move.
Ready?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we go ahead and accept a recommendation coming from LCPC on this Phase 1, what is it called, 1B?
1B, yes, sir.
I second, Mr. Chair.
And he, he does that with the mention, we would certainly love to see the, the water amenity at the front.
He'll be hearing from us.
All right, all right, any further discussion? All in favor, show your hands, please. Motion is approved. Abstention, okay, all right.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, Marty. All right, finance.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm here this evening to present the county's January 2025 financial statements. I'm starting with the general fund. At the end of January, we've collected about 33% of our total budgeted revenues and have spent right at 56% of our total expenditures that were budgeted. Our target for being seven months into the fiscal year is 58%, so our expenditures are on track. And we do, or we know that our revenues start to significantly increase in February when we, we get some large property tax dollars. So this picture will start to turn around. We currently are only showing 1.4 months of operating expenditures in our unreserved fund balance. This is up from last January where we reported less than one month at a 0.1. And like I just said, though, this does start to turn around in February, so this is our really.
I must have tuned that out last year.
It was a little ugly last year, yes, sir. Regarding the departmental expenditures and they, they're pretty similar to what we had for the previous month and the earlier months of the fiscal year. Some of them are still showing ahead of schedule based on this calculation that we do that assumes that each, each department will expend its budget proportionally over the fiscal year, but that's really not the case if you have contracts and agreements that are required to be paid upfront at the fiscal year. So some of these departments include IT, our general administration, which is our regional commission dues, Superior Court, and then the bureaus of professional standards and police standards. Additionally, we still have some departments that are showing a little bit over budget due to overtime hours worked during Hurricane Helene. I spoke to Bob earlier this week and we're still awaiting our reimbursement from FEMA, but all the documentation has been submitted and, and that kind of thing, so.
Was he, was he not expecting some renumbering fairly quickly after?
Yes, sir, the debris removal, yes, was accelerated, expedited.
But it's not here as far as you know.
He, he's been in contact with the state and they won't release the funds until they have their funds from the feds, so.
The check's in the mail?
Hopefully soon, yes, sir. Some other variances we have for January, elections, although it's, it's coming down, the variances as we get further into the fiscal year, but this is just based on the timing of, of, of the elections during the year. And actually, I guess we'll have some additional expenses for March, but we don't anticipate them going over, over budget for the year. The other remaining departments, there's nothing really causing any concern at this point in the fiscal year. And we fully expect these departments to fall back in line as we continue through our fiscal year.
Let me say this, a teaching moment, and you gentlemen helped me out. Ms. Walter, we met with us yesterday, she said there's a coming up election for Public Service Commissioner. Even though Liberty County doesn't have anyone in that race, we still have to operate all of our precincts as if we did. We still have to operate all our precincts as if someone from Liberty County was running the election, we don't have anyone in that. Just, sometimes people say, where's my tax money going? Yeah, something, we call it somehow unfunded mandate, not unfunded mandate, but just based on the state, Secretary of State rules, we have to do that, so.
Just roughly, can you just think about how much it would cost per election in Liberty County, countywide, like the chairman just said, all of the precincts will have to be open, what would it roughly cost?
Oh goodness, I guess it depends on early voting and how many, how many days they're open and.
She said there'd be three weeks, three weeks.
Yeah, I don't remember.
I mean, just a rough ballpark, I would say between 50 and 200,000, which I know is a huge range, but it's, it's, I mean, it's significant, definitely, to have all those people and.
Yeah, and ladies and gentlemen, you can't budget for that because you don't know it's coming. So therefore, Ms. Walter did not have that in the board of elections budget, but it still has to be financed and paid for.
That, there go your tax, some of your tax.
Yeah, and she did, you gave a great range, but it's at least 50.
At least 50, yes, sir.
But, Mr. Chairman, you wouldn't have to have X amount of poll work, I mean, you wouldn't have to have everybody that signed up as a poll worker.
You have to treat it just like it's. Ever have been. Yeah.
Based on the number of voters in the district, it might turn out.
Every one of them's got to have a law officer there too.
I mean, the election this, this past week, the East Splosh election, when I went there for early voting, it was just three people there.
Well, for early voting now, it might be different, but for as far as when the polls open.
On, on election day.
Election day.
Okay, so for, for early voting, you wouldn't have to have everybody, would you?
She, she said that you have to treat it, she said it would, it would mirror the East Splosh election. So whatever.
East Splosh at the building right here, wherever we're at, that we had the one here, it was just, unless they was on lunch, it was just three people there. Compared to the presidential election, it was, it was a lot of people. And they had, they only had one table right there by the door, but they, in the presidential election, it was like two or three tables and at least about 10 or 12.
I don't know the exact head count, but you have to treat it just like it's a regular election, yes. We can get information for it. Yeah, but, but she kind of gave us notice that it was coming. Yeah.
Because I voted election day.
Yeah, all right, Ms. Sam.
Did they have a bunch of people there, a bunch of poll workers on election day?
Police staff, yeah.
And I think I was number 28 at six o'clock.
I'm sorry, Ms. Sam, I had to get that in, yeah.
Okay, turning the page over to solid waste. At the end of January, the solid waste fund is showing a net loss for the year of 760,000 approximately. Right now, we've collected right at 40% of our budgeted revenues and have spent approximately 56% of the budgeted expenditures. However, we just have completed that Colbertson study and so the solid waste assessments have been adjusted and these, those figures will be reflected in the FY25 budget, both the revenues and the expenditures based on Colbertson's recommendations. So these numbers I will tweak, I'm waiting on some last information from his, his staff. But the, once we start collecting those property taxes and in return the solid waste assessments, hopefully this, this net loss picture turns around drastically. There, let's see, there is one department currently showing over budget for solid waste and that was due to some vehicle repairs that had to be made, which I believe I mentioned in previous months. But also, on the next page is a summary of our special revenue funds. They're all in good shape. Victim witness at the district attorney's office is showing a little bit over budget and this is also for an unanticipated vehicle repair. And this would be on a, I guess, a county-owned vehicle and not one of our leased vehicles. And let's see, but moving on to some better news is our sales tax revenue for January was 1,358,000. This by far is our highest collection month ever, actually, under this, this sales tax.
Ever?
Ever, yes.
For January?
Yep, yes, ma'am. And since this T-Splo, I mean, excuse me, since the sales tax splosh began, we've received 23.9 in total proceeds and have spent approximately 13.7 on our splosh projects. The same good news for T-Splosh, we collected our highest month of T-Splosh revenue for January as well.
Ever?
Ever, yes, sir, receiving 1.28 million. And that brings us up to right at 50 million of total collections for T-Splosh. And to date, we have spent 23.2 million. And that concludes my report for January. I'd be happy to answer any questions you all may have.
I'm the one to say, let's get out of here early tonight. Made mention in our workshop on yesterday, where's Pat? Pat down here, that I happened to be flipping through the Coastal Curry and I saw a report called a splosh project. So ladies and gentlemen, if you want to know your splosh funds are going, the Coastal Curry posted, as well as I'm told, it's on our website so that people can go there and see where your splosh dollars are going. We want to do a little, T-Splosh doesn't spend as quickly as Splosh, so we're working on getting a report cut out, but if you want a report cut from Splosh, it is for public observation on the Liberty County website, so you can go and see where those, those dollars are going. I want to congratulate the community also while I'm talking on renewing E-Splosh for our, our partners over at the BOE, that's going to help our students a lot with the, what the school board has planned for those funds. But the law requires us, whenever the referendum is passed, it's posted, you have to stay with those guidelines, so you can't say you're going to spend it on this and then all of a sudden change spending, it has to be spent, but whatever the voters vote on. So all those things are for public view at your time, and let me go ahead and do this while I'm talking. We will revisit T-Splosh in Liberty County in the fall, so we're hoping to have support. These dollars are very valuable. Mr. Brown is, it was Trent, to pave one mile of, of, let's say, let's say dirt road was still over $2 million, one mile, $2 million. I didn't say 200,000, I said 2 million, yeah, one mile. And resurfacing about half that to resurface, you know, so these things are expensive, but those dollars, and by virtue of sales taxes helps us so much because it keeps it from coming from work commissions, from your, from your general fund or from your property taxes. That's why that one penny is so important to, to Liberty County. Any further questions, you can see any of us about it. Thank you, Sam, for that great report.
On the regular splosh, you don't have what each district has.
For splosh, for sales tax seven?
Yeah, you got the T-Splosh.
I'm not currently showing any obligations for sales tax seven.
But, but you don't have the amount that each.
He wants to know his balance.
Is it zero?
Oh, yes, sir, I, I'll send you that page, yes, sir.
It's probably zero, who said zero?
Yeah, that was sales tax six. Yes, sir, I can send it out.
That workshop materials. So thank you, Liberty County, for a great job, man, those, I don't call it any businesses, but shopping, wherever you're shopping, make a difference, so two more wah-wah, two more wah, two wah-wah, all those things, all those things help us out when it comes to funding county projects.
Right, oh, absolutely, just two questions. One, whenever we was talking about the board of elections and, but the last election, we're going to be getting reimbursed 100% correct.
That's my understanding, yes, sir.
Okay.
Yep, I'm going to work with.
She reported that.
To get those figures.
And I did just a little quick math too, at my precinct, there were five people and there are 12 precincts, so that's at least 60 people that were on staff.
Oh, wow, yes, sir.
That's not including those who were at the office.
We have the same precinct, church.
Uh-huh, yeah.
It was.
Uh-huh, there were five in there.
Five, right, yeah, and the police officer.
And the police officer, yeah. Times 12 precincts, that's easily 60 people right there.
Right.
Not including those in the office, Clint, the IT guy, and all those other kind of folk who will support staff, so.
I said all 75.
Good number, good number, thank you, Ms. Sam.
Thank you.
Just two, two more quick questions. And on sales tax seven, what is, what is our overall projection since we're kind of going north of, of what we're, was anticipating?
You want to listen to crystal ball?
Yes.
I mean, the board of education.
I know I ran that calculation a couple of months ago, but now it's probably surpassing that, so I, I can definitely calculate that and send it to you, but it runs through March of '29. So we go.
And then with, with T-Splosh, what, what was our, our projection on that, the number?
The original?
Do you remember the original number? Because that, that's sunset, right? Isn't it T-Splosh? This one does, right. This one does. Right, T-Splosh, once, once we hit a, hit that number, it stops, correct? Yes, for now, and I think the original projection on this T-Splosh was 62B.
Sixty-something, I remember that.
Ah, well, yeah, this is September, we'll be all right.
Oh, we're going to be, oh, yeah.
I mean, yeah, we're going to be south of that.
We just need the next one to renew.
Yes.
Get passed, yes, sir.
Yes.
Okay, that was all, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, sir, my apologies, sir.
No problem.
All right, thank you, Mr. Long.
Oh goodness. Thank you, sir.
I know, right?
You reminding him?
Okay, we had a great meeting this morning, went over a lot of the projects, so I won't really go over every item in my status report unless anybody has any questions on that. And I'll tell you a little bit right now about the email that I sent you, I don't know if everybody got this email yet or not, but I got it shortly after I left the retreat this morning. The state is putting out another, it's not LMEG, it's called LRA funds, it's 2025 LRA funds, and it has no match to it. You'll look on the second page, or third page, actually, highlighted in green is the funds that we will get if we apply for it. The LMEG application rules apply. Wanted you to know that the money is available and that way you can kind of determine exactly which way you want to go with that. One of my recommendations is going to be to you. One of my recommendations is going to be to you is our twenty-twenty-five L-Meg application was, you know, basically a half million dollars for almost six million dollars worth of work. So this would be a great supplement to the existing projects that we've got sitting out there. So you guys look at it, you know this money's available, have a short period of time to apply for it. So probably at the next month, mid-month meeting, I'm going to need your direction so that I can go ahead and apply for this.
So we have to identify projects, is that what you're saying?
Yes, sir. And, and my recommendation is probably going to be piggyback.
On the L-Meg, okay, well, yeah, you're right.
Can you bring those or remind us what we had on L-Meg?
I'll be glad to.
And I did notice that they striped my, my roads, the white and the yellow lines.
Good, and they went back and re-striped a couple that were not thick enough.
Okay, I want to let you know that, but anyway.
They, they finished up, pretty much.
Would the other municipalities, would they get a, an email from GDOT to let them know?
Everybody should get an email.
That they've got some funds?
If you meet certain criteria.
You probably got this one. The chairman probably got it.
You have to meet certain criteria to qualify.
Highlight the green and the unincorporated area, so you're telling me that the other cities are going to get a portion themselves?
Yeah, they get, yeah, they get their, that's the dollar amount for each one of those cities.
That's a dollar amount. Narrate that for me. How much is Allenhurst getting?
Fifteen thousand, four hundred and eighty-four. And eighty-four.
Guess on that.
If they qualify.
So you got Midway and Riceboro.
Next Beach.
Riceboro, they're getting approximately twenty-seven thousand, nine hundred and sixty-two and eighty-seven cent.
But it don't have anything, I, I thought we'd have. So that's a mile?
No, sir. That's just how much money you get.
Total, total dollars.
Little amount. Same, same formula as they use for L-Meg every year.
So.
That is with a caveat, as long as they have a qualified local government status.
Yeah, they, they've got to be in good standing.
That's what I was trying to say earlier.
I, I see where y'all are going, I see exactly where y'all are going. Right.
Let that slide.
I'm spitting on handle, what, oh, it's pretty quick.
Trent say that, um, that he's going to come back to us next month and ask us, do we want him to apply for some free money?
Non-matching.
He wants to answer that question next month?
Uh, now, right now, yeah, go for it.
No, I gotta, I gotta, I gotta identify the projects that we're going to do it on.
Other projects?
Yeah.
Where they had the projects identified.
Round here that, uh, that should be pretty easy, shouldn't it, though?
Yes, sir, to me it is.
Okay.
To me, I'm like, let's put it a piggyback on top of what we did with the last L-Meg. That way everybody's got a same proportion and it goes toward their projects and it, it helps lighten the burden.
I mean, what, what's the deadline for you to apply?
Well, the deadline in the email is like July.
Got some time.
Thirty-first, it's, it's in there.
It's not time-sensitive, but, but your point's well taken.
Yeah, July, June fifteenth.
It's kind of a no brainer.
Don't tell me what I'm going to get for Christmas, you got it, you talk.
June fifteenth.
Yeah, but I just need you guys to say yes.
Okay, and we're still, we can still apply for the safety money if, if some of those become available?
Yes, sir.
Okay, what, what's that window on that, when is that usually?
Usually safety monies are special or you, you apply for them individually.
Okay.
So we can do that.
So it's not like a August, September, whatever, okay, all right. So what do we need, what do you need from us to, to do that?
Yes, sir, what I'll probably do is get those, especially those two other projects we talked about today, turning roads in at nine.
Okay, okay, okay.
We'll put together a package and ask for some of them.
All right.
Mr. Chair, I just got just one simple question. What this, what type of formula are they using to calculate the funds?
So it's a pretty simple formula. And it is on their website, they show you how they do it. It's based on your roadway center line miles and your population. And so that's one reason you see us every year, we're pretty aggressive as we add roads. We send up roadway miles to them because it makes a lot of dollars difference in dollars to us.
I, I, I hear what you're saying, but the math's still not mathing. What's some of these? I'm just looking at some of the other counties. Like for instance, what is that, Lanier?
Well, you stop and think now.
It's political, huh? Got to be.
You, you take out Fort Stewart and you take out the marsh.
We're less than, yeah.
It really narrows our window.
Okay. I'm, I'm just looking at some of these, some of these other counties and municipalities. And I'm just looking at, at their population and looking at their, their mileage and looking at the amount of money they're receiving. And some of them is higher, some of them is lower. So that formula, I, I guess it.
Those population and miles of?
Population and miles.
Combo, okay. Well, y'all can talk more.
Yeah, yeah, I, I was just, I was just trying to figure it out.
Need me anymore?
We're done, sir.
And we're done.
Thank you, we, you, you giving up today. All right, Mr. Stanley.
Good afternoon. I'm here this afternoon to ask the commission to approve a proposal to replace our public safety radio system microwave network. Our current network is over twenty years old and has begun to fail and is out of, out of life of service, so it cannot be repaired. Currently, anytime we have an issue, and we, we've had a few, Motorola is having to actually go in and pull the boards out, replace the actual little circuits and stuff like that to make the system work. The proposal is to replace the microwave system on four towers, three of them in Liberty County and one of them in Bryan County. And what this does is it ties each one of our towers back to the radio core, which is located in Chatham County at the sheriff's office. The total cost of the proposal is one million, four hundred ninety-two thousand, three hundred and twenty-seven dollars. And we have Mr. Wade Britt here with Motorola, if you have any questions about this.
Not that you didn't, but explain to the average taxpayer what this is.
So it's a microwave as a radio, so if you ever look on a tower, it's the, the round dishes. The kind of the round dishes, and basically what it does is it connects our airport tower back to the nine-one-one center. It connects both of those back to our tower that's at Coastal Electric in Midway. And then from Coastal Electric, it shoots another beam to a tower in Bryan County. And then it picks up and goes from there to Chatham County. And it basically is just an IP network that connects all the towers together and allows the data to pass through so the radios work for the firemen, police, everybody else.
For the public safety.
Yeah, public safety, ambulance is everybody.
Everybody.
It also connects the nine-one-one center to all the other nine-one-one centers in the network.
That's what I was wanting to get to.
Sorry.
They understand nine-one-one.
Yeah, it, it makes everything work and it provides that link to, so that our towers can talk to the other towers in the entire C-Gar and regional network, a radio network system.
And we have a twenty-year-old system?
Twenty.
Twenty-plus?
Twenty, twenty.
Twenty, yeah, twenty-plus, yeah.
That needs to be replaced.
About twenty-three, twenty-five years old.
Is it twenty-five? Yeah, twenty-three.
Wait, you talking about the one at the, at your office? Is that the one you were talking about replacing? Or is it somewhere, a, a tower somewhere else?
Not the towers.
Not the towers.
On, on each one of the tower. If, if you look at the tower behind my office, there's a, there's a round dish on it, it's to replace those. There's one of those at each tower.
How, how tall is that tower?
The one at my office.
Hundred and sixty feet.
Hundred and sixty feet.
The airport tower is four hundred and eighty feet.
Four hundred and eighty feet.
Or, excuse me, the wall tower, the old towers, used to where the old airport is, and I believe Coastal Electric's tower is four thirty, I think.
I think so, something like that.
That's it.
Does this tower need to be increased?
No, not the tower, it's, it's a.
Parts.
I mean, I'm just asking, because, um, you know, where you're at right there, you've been, that building's been there for a number of years, so just trying to say if we need to fix it, let's fix it right, right now.
Now, this is to replace an antenna that's on each one of the towers.
On the towers.
It, it require, it's going to require, you know, technicians to climb the tower, take the stuff down, climb back up, put the new stuff up, and then take the stuff out of the buildings at the bottom and replace all of that.
Expected chef life? Twenty years, we'll be gone.
Yeah, me too.
Perfectly, I'm sort of live.
Oh, speak for yourself.
And the, the project timeline is nine to twelve months? Nine to twelve months for the replacement and the funding source for this will be out of, uh, sales tax.
Sales tax.
That's just what I was fixing to ask.
Are they going to fund it?
The funds, is coming out sploß?
Sploß.
Hear that? Sploß is paying for this microwave.
Right.
These microwaves.
We, we knew it was coming, I remember the conversation about it, yeah.
We wouldn't be able to purchase those without sploß.
Ninety-foot tower, a hundred and fifty-foot tower, and it cost them nine to twelve months to put them, climb up it, down it.
No, it's, we had a foot that has to be constructed, we have to do some licensing work with telecommunications committee. Once you put it gets here, probably about three, four weeks to get it all up operational.
Okay.
These technical stuff.
And it's got to be done, so, I mean, while all the radio traffic's going on, we got to kind of time it so that we can take everything down, so.
We, uh, give the approval to, uh, go ahead and purchase this microwave tower.
Go ahead.
Motorola.
Washington's second, it's Mr. Stanley, he didn't ask for much. He waited twenty years after this. Thank you, sir. Any further discussion? All the favorite show of hands, please. When would, when would this, when would this process begin after we?
Outside that, that grid.
Merry Christmas, sir. Sploß works again, thank you for saying that. Resolution, try nine-five Georgia JDA, Ms. Brink Grant's name is on here, but I don't see Ms., am I missing Ms. Grant?
No, she had called and asked that be postponed.
Okay.
They're working on some other stuff.
All right, we'll do that then. All right, Mr. Payne, good to meet you, good to see you, sir. Come and, um, update us if you will. Ladies and gentlemen, man, I'm only rolling a teaching moment, this gentleman, the tax assessor office, they assess your property. The tax commissioner, they collect the taxes. They, they, his office give us your assessed value. We all work together, the tax commissioner sends out the bills for you and our, our finance person commented earlier that the bills are coming in, so the funds are coming in from the assessments. He's required by, it's good leading for you. He, he has state regulations as to how he does his assessments in his office.
Yes.
It's nowhere arbitrary, it's defined and you have to adhere to it.
Yes.
Am I close to being right?
You're close to it.
All right, come on.
I appreciate the intro, yes, sir.
First time I've ever seen this presented, that you had to bring a bouncer with you.
Obviously, you haven't dealt with taxes. Uh, I want to start off by thanking you for letting me present. Last time we spoke, you had some things that you wanted me to do for the citizens of Liberty County. One was outreach and we've started that process and I'll go through this. This is a sign here that when the appraisers are out in certain neighborhoods, you have these subdivisions, this will be in the ground, so that if you're coming home and you, you, you see the sign and people are walking around your property, they won't get too alarmed, so that's just one that we're getting printed. This is another sign that we're getting printed, it's going to be on the board. We'll have these all around Liberty County. They can scan the QR code and I'm hoping that since this is on YouTube, that they'd be able to do it from that. This will lead them to our Facebook. What I've been trying to do is find the best route to reach the people, to find out how we can do that. We'll be updating our Facebook, we're trying to build our Facebook page, so that if we have updates, we can reach, reach them out through there. Legislative session, April, April fourth is the last day for final day. I took the liberty of printing some of the House bills that affect the assessment office. I don't want to go too deep in it because until this last day, things will definitely change. We all know about House Bill five eighty-one.
Oh, yeah.
Now there's House Bill ninety-two, which is coined the cleanup bill for House Bill five eighty-one. And then it's going to be a cleanup bill for that one too? It's, this has been a, a definitely trying part, especially because most of this is implementing changes within the assessment office. One of the things is this, the new assessment notice, I talked about that last time I was here. The estimated rollback, I'm sorry, the estimate of taxes used to be at the bottom of the assessment notice and now they're adding a estimate of rollback. And we're working with the, with Joey and Samantha to make sure that all the tax entities get that in. Now, what that is increased or what that has happened as far as my office, what we have to do is get you a digest earlier. Because we're trying to figure out, and I'm working with the Joey to find out which route we want to go. Do you want to base your rollback rate on last year's budget or you want to base it on what is going on now? So if we do it now, that means we're going to have to increase the timetable of when we get you a finished digest. Now, the caveat to that is we give you a digest and just like last year, those values could change. Something could happen in between the now of, of giving you a proposed digest and then final day of getting ready to mail assessment notices. So we, we have to be careful. The, the good thing is we're, we're working hard now, we're looking at April first, trying to be, as far as trying to finish, my office has definitely stepped up to try and get this done for the county. Again, we, we're looking at April first, April fifth to try and get that to my board for approval. Some of the other changes that are still in there is that the chief appraiser shall ensure that every parcel in his or her respective county is appraised at least every three years. That means we have to break the county up into three and have an appraiser step on that land and make sure that that property record card matches what is on the assessment notice. Now, with that, as you know, you vote on new subdivisions, you just did one today. We're increasing lots every day. So the amount of appraisers that we have in office right now does not match, according to the state, what we need to make sure that you get a digest and get it on time. These are some of the House bills, I, like I said, I don't want to go too deep into this unless you do have questions. This is the ninety-two part, House Bill ninety-two, and some of the things that are cleaning up the House Bill five eighty-one. Ones that are highlighter, ones I thought were more important, Kuva flipper. Ex-part of it, we have the adding, adds a twenty-twenty-five cap to the new statewide floating homestead exemption. At, the way it's written now, it will cover the whole property. So the House Bill now will put a cap on how much acreage you can have under House Bill five eighty-one. As far as outreach, I will be at March twenty-second, twenty-twenty-five at ten AM, performing art center auditorium. We will have myself and some other of my staff for the county to come out and ask the property tax exemption questions. We're doing it on a Saturday, hoping that, that will give the opportunity for everybody to come out. Everybody usually works throughout the day. But again, this is part of our outreach that we're, that you asked me to do. Our slogan, we do have an open door policy and our goal is to be fair and equitable to everyone in Liberty County. I always say, again, I've, Mr. Blunt came by my office to speak with me, Mr. Stevens has come by. He's had constituents come to ask him a billion questions. I don't propose to know every law by heart, but if you come to my office, we can definitely research it together. So I'm definitely putting that invitation out to the citizens of Liberty County to stop by our office. If you have questions, don't do it by blog or Facebook post or, you know, whatever avenue you get used to get your knowledge. Stop by our office and if I don't know, I can call somebody who does. I think that is all I said. We're also in the Coastal Courier. We have a ad in the paper letting know, everyone know that April first is the deadline to come into our office if they want to file for homestead, file, file for conservation use, apply for FLPA, Kuva, preferential agricultural assessment. Or just come by and let us review your property, make sure that the homestead you have is beneficial to you.
I think that is it.
I would also like to invite the county commissioners, if you would just like to come by our office, stop, meet my wonderful staff, kind of, if you have questions about what we do, I have an open invitation. Mr. Blunt has come by, Mr. Stevens, and I would also like to invite you guys to come by and just meet, see what we do in our office. Lastly, I'd like to thank Mr. Joseph Brown over here. I haven't been here long, but I can tell, say that you have made my, you've welcomed me. You come, he actually came by my office. That was a miracle to me. I rarely see commissioners and upper management stopped by the tax assessment office, and you extended that hand. Every time you see me, you say, "Man, I'm so glad you're here," you know, and that helps my confidence. So I just wanted to tell you, enjoy your retirement, and the little conversations we've had on the side, it's helped me. It's helped me feel more comfortable in Liberty County. Alright? And that's all I have. Does anybody have any questions?
I do. Your very, was it your first slide when you talked about the, how often it's required you do your appraisals?
Yes.
Every three.
Talk about that a little bit for the, for the general audience.
Well, this was already mandated. We do it anyway, but now they are more looking at it closely, making it an actual statutory mandate. Reason being, a lot of counties didn't do it. It helps because at least when you come to appear your property, the information that it was based on, we know was correct. If you had a garage that's no longer there, then we would have known that when we sent out your assessment notice. And again, it helps to keep up with what properties you have in Liberty County so that everyone is paying their fair share. And that, yeah, that is, we're up to twenty-seven thousand parcels, and that is, you're growing.
So much for the eighteen, Joey.
But one of my points, and I think this is not the form, I think the, I'll get the option, I mean, the opportunity come budget time, but I want to make sure that we get your digest to you quickly so that we can get these rollbacks right.
We'd appreciate, we'd appreciate that.
Because it will hold up our assessment notice, which in turn pushes back the opportunity to get your digest out. I know last year, we had a little bit of hiccup. We are working closely with the Tax Commissioner to make sure that this year is a good year where we can get these, the digest done and get bills out at a time that is not Christmas. I don't think that's the worst thing.
Right, that's right. So the appraisal, if I recall from previous administrations, they would rotate their appraisal. One time it would be agricultural, one time it'd be residential?
It depends. We run, we run studies, and if the study says that the agricultural is, needs to be looked at, then we'll look at it. But the Department of Audits lets us know also.
Do they?
Yes. They'll send a report each year to let us know where we, where they feel our assessments are.
Ah.
Yeah.
So Big Brother is looking.
Every year. And they send physical people to come down here and do their own appraisals.
Wow.
And that's where the site part comes into, where the five-dollar-per-parcel situation comes in, because the Department of Revenue uses their information to decide on if you should be cited or not.
Okay. So then, you could very really assess all, all the categories?
We do it anyway. Every year we do, because, one, you have to. Part of a parcel is not just a house. You have house and land, or it's just land only. So we have to figure out what the land values are first, and then we start to look at if the house needs to be adjusted, either based on the cost of goods has gone up, or the market for that area has gone up. So it's, it's, we have studies that we do to figure out what neighborhoods need to be adjusted, and we're actually going through that right now.
Okay.
Ms. Chairman, I have.
Go ahead.
I was, Ms. Payne, thank you for this information, very well put together. But I was going to ask, do we have in your office Appraiser three and four, or can you elaborate a?
I wish I had everything together. We have a lot of fours.
That's good.
Yeah, we do, we do have a lot of fours.
We worked on that and approved budgets for those folks.
We have a lot of fours and we have threes, but I'm big on education. We actually have in-house educational things that we do to bring them up to, our budget, we have to spread it out, you know. Yes, we do have fours and threes.
Well, I just wanted to make sure we still have them and they're still keeping up their certification.
I'm glad you asked that, because we just been notified we have some imminent retirement coming up that will kind of.
So we'll have to.
Yeah, we have, I had my budget meeting with my board today to decide on what we, how we're going to restructure. But right now, what you have, I can say you have the best staff in, in Georgia. And it's noted that at our conferences, and we have everything in-house. We have mapping in-house. We have Q, we have Q. And he's been definitely, he's also my bodyguard, but. But I can say, they, along with my statement for Mr. Brown, my staff has made it a lot easier for me in my transition.
Now, the requirement to do the appraisal for three years, you mentioned it can be a challenge. Does it have to be physically appraised, or can, is there some?
We could do an aerial, but this is a tree each area, you know? It's got a lot of trees. So we would have to do a flyby when the leaves are falling, so that, that puts you in a certain time period, and they have change detection software. But again, you, the terrain has to be one that is worth the price of flying it. If you have a bunch of trees, then you're not going to be able to see certain homes under that. With that change detection software, it does overlay. So you, twenty-twenty-four, you do a flyby. Twenty-twenty-five, you do another flyby. Then the software overlays that and finds any detections of change, picks up pools. If you added a garage, it'll show what, what's changed. That's one option. But for us, also keep in mind, we're picking up permits, we're picking up new construction, we're handling BOE, we're dealing with customers. We, that's all along with having to touch each property. But we're creating a plan to try and get that done.
How were the appeals this past time? I didn't, I didn't hear anything, so how did?
It was, from my understanding, one of your lower.
One of our lower years.
One of the lower years.
I didn't hear anything. Yeah.
One of the lower years.
They fucked up. They got the tax bill, but they, but.
We did a lot of outreach, not other than that, but the adjustments that we made were, I guess, noted.
Yeah. The only thing I suggest, and you might work it in, I'm surprised, Commissioner Stevens, and say, you know, if you do one of these on, on this end, might want to do one on the east end of the county, also one of your town halls.
We did Waltourville, if that's the east end.
No.
Okay, okay. I'm still getting my bearings, yeah. I'm used to, I'm used to P Street Road, Cameron Road, you know, those things.
No, 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 no.
They're like, number ninety-two, highway ninety-two, and I'd be like, seventy-seven, what, you know, but that's, that's, I'm learning.
Q knows about that. Yeah, yeah.
He's been my guy.
Alright. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Let's, I hope you guys can work out that digest information, get that done. So you're right, we don't want, if we don't have to, we don't want tax bills for Christmas.
No.
And the quicker we get that together and get it, get it in, the better for.
Well, the main thing is that we're all working together.
Yeah.
And so we're trying to get that done.
We appreciate you.
And again, tomorrow, Saturday, if any of y'all could stop by, want to stop by, just let me know. And I would also appreciate if y'all just stop by the office and come by and meet the staff.
By the way, I just left off of Glenwood.
Glenwood?
See?
Okay.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. Alright, Contract Grass Growing LCRD, Mr. Gross.
Grass growing?
It's growing in my yard.
Good evening, good evening.
Hello, sir.
I'm here to present you all the information on twenty-five, twenty-six LCRD grass mowing bids. We had eleven total bids this year, as to, I think it was two, two years earlier. And the lowest bids for those, we had three agencies, Russell Landscaping, and their bid was for seventy-three, nine fifty, and seventy-six, five hundred the second year. Twenty-Fifth Hour Enterprises, twenty-six, three fifty, and twenty-six, three fifty the second year. And Jody Smiley Landscaping for twenty-five, it was twenty-four, two twenty-five, and twenty-four, two twenty-five for the second year. This bid, these bids included cutting all the properties and parks two times a month from April, May, September, and October, and three times a month, June, July, and August. So the total time they would be cutting is from April to October. It is my recommendation that we accept the, to the board, that we accept the bid by Jody Smiley Landscaping, which was the lowest bid.
Who's currently under contract with you?
That would be Twenty-Fifth Hour is currently doing it. And they had the second lowest.
It's a widespread of.
Yeah, and we had them all the way up to a hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars.
You know, one of them says three hundred.
Yeah.
Unless that zero's in the wrong place.
Yeah, that's, that's crazy.
Yeah, that, I don't know if that zero's right.
Yeah, I.
We, we.
Got three hundred and six thousand.
Well, we opened them, we saw some, we saw some interesting prices.
Okay, well, you're satisfied with Mr. Smiley, heck it?
Mr. Gross.
Yes, sir.
I noticed you got two down here that did not meet the requirements. What, what, what were some of the needs?
They didn't, the Georgia, they have, they have to sign and submit with every proposal, a Immigration Compliance Act notification. And if they don't submit that, you can't even consider a price. So those two unfortunately did not submit that certification in the packet.
Okay.
Raymond, the, the one from Parker Land and Dish, that's three hundred and six thousand.
That was the number.
Not thirty? Yeah, I'm not sure they understood the form right.
That information was pulled, all the information was pulled directly from the bid sheets that we had.
Then double-checked, then map, double-checked, and everything online items. And most of the brothers, they bid in the past. So, so I mean, they understood, because they're twenty-five, and then, oh, okay, I see what they're doing. That's projected for.
Projected for next year, for next year.
Because it's a two-year. You know, we switched that a couple of years ago.
Okay. They do, that, you know, these are required to go out on the state website, and so we picked up folks that really had never performed the service and had done it before. They were, they're pretty large landscape companies, and, you know, some of them, like, well, I won't call him by name, but the hundred and twenty-two thousand, some of those, that's a larger operation. It's got a higher overhead. Not in our areas, from other areas.
They have to mobilize, huh? Okay. Alright, Chair and Attorney Motion.
Chairman, I make the motion, we approve the grass mowing for years twenty-five and twenty-six to Mr. Jody Smiley Landscaping, per recommendation.
Motion in a second. We approved a bid for Mr. Jody Smiley, as submitted by staff. Any further discussion?
Just, never mind, I'm fine.
Alright, all in favor, show of hands, please. Alright.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Administrative report.
We reported out, so.
Well, the, the Commission will need to go into executive session for a first session. We will come back, of course, after, as we normally do after that time. But right now, Chair and Attorney Motion to go out of regular session to executive session.
Don't move, Mr. Chair.
Personnel. We got a second. All in favor, show of hands. We will now enter into the executive session. Hope not to be too long.
Yes, sir.
Don't know what size of shoe you wear, but you got some big footprints to cover. And I believe... And I believe and I trust that you can do it. And I will work with you 100% to make sure you are efficient and the citizens of Liberty County get the best service that they can ever receive.
Oh, it's my turn. Hey, Joseph and Joseph, man, I don't believe man, man, the crew breaking up like this, but dang, it was Fat Boys, now it's them. But you'll get it.
Come back, come back.
But Mr. Mosley, I definitely appreciate the opportunity. You know, we've worked together on a few projects already. I know you are going to do a good job. I know you're dedicated. I know you're competent. Then, I mean, you had the best person next to you to learn from. So, you know, it's... I'm excited. It's bittersweet seeing one of y'all leaving, but I know we're in good hands. And I'm just, I'm proud. And I know you don't, well, I mean, obviously, you're already working. So, I want to continue to see you work. And I'm just concerned, are you going to still be helping with the youth commission and stuff? Or you'll pass it on? I don't know, but we'll talk about that later. But I appreciate everything you've done, you know, with those particular projects with me. There we go.
Well, Mr. Mosley, congratulations.
Thank you, ma'am.
Welcome aboard to this new position. And I do too look forward to working with you. And I hate to see Mr. Brown go.
I understand.
And I know you probably do too.
I do.
But anyway, you're going to do fine. We're here for you. We are here for you, okay? You're the only person that we hire. And we don't want to use the other word, but we are, I'm proud to be a part of it. A new day in Liberty County. A new day. Good day.
Congratulations, Mr. Mosley.
Thank you, sir.
I've only known you a short period of time, but everything I see is outstanding. And I'm looking forward to working with you, supporting you 100% as well as I know you will support us and this commission and also welcome aboard.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate that.
Mr. Mosley, I'm excited about the, you know, for you and your new venture. I'll put just this quick math here. I got another three years and nine months left in the days, but I'm not counting. But I'll be here for you, you know, and I know you'll be here for us to help guide us through. I know it is a tough act to follow, but, you know, we'll we'll help you through it. Anything that you need, just give us a call and we'll be here to support you. Okay?
Thank you, sir. Appreciate that.
Yeah, welcome aboard.
Thanks, sir.
You do have some pretty big shoes to fill, but I feel confident, you know, that you can grow into them. But just always remember the easiest thing to do is nothing. I mean, that's the simplest thing. And always remember that you can't treat everybody the same because they won't let you. You just got to be fair with everybody. And that's all that I ask you to do is, you know, be fair with your staff and with the community and support us wherever you can. And we have the most diversified county, I guess, that could be anywhere in this state. So, welcome aboard. And I'm just a phone call away. So, if you need me for anything, let me know.
Yes, sir. Appreciate it.
Appreciate it. Enjoy. Thank you for your time here.
Once again, thank you, Mr. Brown, for even being part of this process. It was something that you put a lot of work into. I hope you don't mind me saying that when you were looking for an assistant county administrator, you had certain qualities that you were looking for. And throughout conversation, you found those in Mr. Mosley. So, you come well recommended, sir.
Thank you.
I'm going to leave it as simple as this. Sometime I heard other preachers say this. All I ask you to do is just love the people. Just love the people. Everything will be fine. Now, any comments you would have to say?
Oh, wow. It's truly, they said, it's always challenged to come in and try to feel the shoes of somebody who's put in a lot of effort and who's highly admired for his competence, for his diligence and for his commitment to the county. And I thank Joy for being there and for mentoring me. I come from the city for most of my life. And learning county government has been something I've had to do. And I'm looking forward to working with each and every last one of you. Just wish my mom was here, but I'm looking forward to it.
You'll be fine.
Give him those tissues, Joy.
Give me the tissues.
The road, Joseph.
Got you. Got you.
Give me the tissues.
Joy, if you're going to pass, pass everything.
She's here, sir. She's here. Yeah, she's here. Yeah, she's here, sir. She's here. I just, I just...
I've known that. Now, when you sat in that office down there, you could claim that "there on the wall" belongs to you too.
I'd just like to remind the commissioners, we have a lot of our play, you know, per hour last couple of days. So, let's not overwhelm this gentleman with all these things at one time. Let's let him get his feet wet to get some things in order so that we might all be progressive. But we have, this is a very progressive county with a lot of products, projects, excuse me, that lies ahead of us, you know. We talked about some of those today. Y'all know where they are. So, let's be fair with him and not just bombard him with things that could, we can handle ourselves or certainly, the chairman bring those things to me, we're working on it together. But we want to do everything on our part to make you successful. Am I right? All right. Thank you, sir. We look forward to it.
Thank you for trusting me with this opportunity.
Excellent. Chair entertain the motion to adjourn. Second, all in favor?
All right.